Antiques on York in Rockville, Indiana, 100 West York Street, celebrating our 10th year in business.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start off with the claims and the amount of 544,642,36. On my few notations I have, we had a small scripture point bill in there for 35,000 for South Market. We had a wastewater digester pump or pipe bill in there, stormwater bonds for about 58,000, and our impotability is 211 this month.
I make a motion to approve.
I know, you're gonna look.
I think she covered everything. I looked at it. Yeah, we paid for the column excavating thing. So we spread that out over three utilities, looks like, you know? Yeah, that's the only thing that I saw that I thought was interesting, that's the thing you mentioned. Okay.
Is that second?
Yep.
All in favor?
I'll pass around. I just need the top copy signed by each of you for, we're at August and September banks right now, all balanced, and that includes all of our bank's records that we have.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Just sign the top copies?
Yeah, yeah, those are, we combined them, just wanted to see if you were concerned.
Yeah, that's good.
I've got minutes that I had sent, apparently I missed the November 20th of our last meeting, so I do have those for approval, and I've got December 4th minutes as well. It looks as if everybody was present.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My resolutions, I'll go ahead and start reading through those, I'm signing. We'll need a signature on each one of these, and we have all of them. Park and I went over some fund reports. Talked about some of the things, some of the money that could potentially move to cover projects, and some of the fund reports that just needed some cleaning up, cleaning up. So I basically have resolutions that I'll notice, 2023-15 through 2023-23. We have a NPH restricted to the OKRA grant. I'll just go through these quickly, just so they're on record here. 15,416,96. Got a 9,158,38 from our sewer project retainage fund that we've had on there. Put that to the OKRA grant, clear that out. Got 45,310,91 from wastewater improvement to the OKRA. And this is clearing up a balance on the OKRA grant that we had from last year. Has nothing to do with our OKRA grant moving forward. 68,818,72 from Community Crossings, with a sum of $34,400,36 to seed it, and the same amount going to food and beverage. There's a resolution for $652,37 from the unsafe building fund that's been on the accounts for a long time, to the general fund. There's a resolution for 395,87 from the rainy day to the general fund. There's a resolution moving the $5,000 left in our CARES app provider relief fund to the general fund. 1,067,982 from sewer construction, which was safe, to the wastewater operating, and one for $800 from downtown area planning fund to the general fund.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Someone just need a signature on each one of those, please, I don't have them all signed. I'm sorry.
Airplane. Just want you to forget it.
Do you want me to go over the grants while we're doing this?
Sure, might as well, rather than wasting time.
I had on the agenda under new business, or, under new business. There's just some grants that we can share with everybody, all the various boards, and I think some of these you can even apply for personally. But we have a ready 2.0 grant, that's a regional, a regional grant opportunity looking for capital projects. Governmental projects that are one-to-one match, they are due by February 1st. So there's quality of life, quality of place, quality of opportunity. There's an energy efficient conservation program to increase energy efficiency for units of government. The grant funds will support eligible program activities such as energy planning, energy audits, and building upgrades, and electrical transportation for communities. There's no match requirement set in place for those, whose applications are due by February 2nd. And then there's also the Wabash River Heritage Corridor Fund. Eligible applicants, or units of government and nonprofits. Funding is 80/20 with $100,000 max in grant. Structure or land must be listed in the state or national historical registry. Those applications are due January 31st. I think we might have a building at the park that, I think, was our, I was already told that may be eligible for that. And Cindy Todd has said that she's welcome, if anybody wants to reach out to her personally, she helped to give any more information on any of those grant opportunities that are out there. I think we'll probably talk about, or talk about later, some of them that we will apply for on a town level. But if there's any other boards or anything that wanna, interested in that, if they want more information, she said feel free to send them her way.
Thank you, Brenda. One thing too, that she did mention, the non-matching. If, if a organization or one of our other boards would happen to have some funding to go with it, they would probably expedite those grants. So I think the park buildings would fall under that, like I said. Possibly even the energy grant, so might be worth looking into. All right. Nick, you ready?
Uh, yeah, um, so I'll be brief, but, so next court date's gonna be 1/23. We were gonna have court on ordinance violations tomorrow, but we got that one resolved, so it's been dismissed. The 1/23 court date, some small claims matters, and then we also have ordinance violations set 1/30. That's actually a trial. And then on 1/26 was the small claims and ordinance violation. And then 2/22, we have a trial date also on an ordinance case. So we have about five or six that are gonna have to be tried.
Well, what are some of the things that are going to court?
So there's one that's at, let's see, 706 East Ohio. It's, I mean, we've been through the process trying to get it fixed up, and they've done some things, but they didn't get it compliant.
Okay, it's a structure that has structural issues?
Garbage, trash in the yard, vegetation that's not being upkept. Broken down construction-type materials.
Yeah, okay.
Some of them are in a state of partial construction where they started building on them. That one's not.
I bet.
One of them's, they gutted and hung a deer in the yard for a week. You know, you can't do that in town, there's ordinance on that. You know, there's, there's several things that have been cited, so it's not always the same thing.
Well, it's mostly just unkept.
Unkept yards, partial construction.
Well, what's the status, I don't know, it's been, I'm sure it's been cited over there in all of court. It's been a while since I've heard, is that home still?
So if you're talking, there was two of them that they were working on and they never got done. They got another permit, so they're good till, I wanna say like April.
So you can just renew your permit and?
Well, they only get a six-month extension.
Okay.
And then after that.
How many times can they do that?
Once is my understanding.
Okay. Yeah, I haven't heard anything about it, I went by, didn't drive in, but I thought I saw.
So Bill's gonna give you a summary, it looks like, of where you're at on court cases and things like that. At least he gave me one, I don't know.
I haven't got, that's not, that's like a rough draft.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
So, but anyway, he's working on a summary of it, as you can see, it's about three, two and a half pages long.
I was just curious.
So, so I was writing down some of the court dates on his, what he has working on, but, um. So yeah, some of them are set for trial, then he has a list of ones that we've resolved, then he has a list of ones that we've got judgments on. And then there's a couple that are pending, that I gotta fill them in on some information on, so.
Okay.
But it goes through triple G as far as how many we've processed in the last year, just to give you an idea how busy Bill and I have been on things. So we've been through the alphabet two and a half times. But yeah, of those though, there's only about seven that we may end up having to try, so that, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
People are fixing up their properties. And then on the small claims thing, Mandy's been doing a lot of that, but we do have a couple of those that we're gonna have to try, and they're set for the 23rd, so. And then we have a few newer ordinance violations that I haven't filed yet. It's gonna be my responsibility, but, but that's the primary thing I've been working on. I, we have been looking at, Bill and I have, as far as our ordinance that regulates animals in town, that's something that we've kind of been pulling information. We'll have more information for you guys in the future on that, just to make sure we're up to date with what other communities are doing, so. So, been doing some legal research on that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Nick. Bill?
I just have a couple of things. One is the memorandum of agreement for the Crimes Against Children Task Force. Nick, you've got a copy of that, I don't know which one of the signature blocks you feel would be more appropriate than that.
So I kind of thought that they may just give you the authority to sign. It's kind of what my mindset was.
That's kind of what I was thinking, that I print both off just in case.
Yeah, I was just thinking that they'd be in the loop and that we're gonna be involved in that, and that they give you the authority to sign, just so they know that some of the main power may be in regards to a task force.
Do we need any kind of a recommendation that he be allowed to do that, or is that?
You gotta give him permission to sign.
I make a motion, second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Ian submitted a case, they really liked it, they asked him to join. It's kind of a big thing when you're asked to join the task force. So we're really proud of the work he's been putting forward, and he's doing a really good job for us.
Congratulate him too, as well.
Brady just graduated with honors, I think I sent that out in the email, but he's happy to be back. We're happy to have six, four, five officers.
Hooray, I did love to see it.
Just so you know, those task force aren't thrown out very often, so I mean, that, that's kind of a big deal.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't see local communities get involved in this very often.
The other thing I have is our phones are starting to get to the point where they're not wanting to hold the battery. I talked to Derek Tislow from First, he said we're not actually as a government agency under any kind of contract, but I'm still bringing it forward just because the way it says when you get a phone for $30, that you're basically in a two-year contract. I'm supposed to ask for permission for any contract, so that's why I'm bringing that one forward.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We tabled your vacation, I think we'd like to, if anybody wanna open that discussion up and?
Well, let me recap what I can remember, if somebody jump in and help. Basically, proposed, Bill, that we don't accumulate, allow the police to accumulate their holiday.
More than 216.
More than 216, and what is it you wanted to do?
Uh, well, after talking to Jimmy, I know he had also recommended that, uh, that we put a spot on a time park so that the officers aren't able to take it, or they know that they're not gonna be able to use it, that they could say, I would rather be paid than put that in the bank. I know I've got enough already spent, or I got enough vacation, I know I'm just not gonna use that. And it would be more beneficial for me to cash it out. It's not gonna cost the town more, because you're using the same amount of money that you've already spent on the holiday, that you're using to fill that person's position. So basically, it was to put a cap on there, and also to have the ability to either cash out or put in a bank the, uh, the hours, and also that the hours, if not you, if the 216 hours weren't, the surplus wasn't used in 84 days, it would be paid out, and that would be three, or three months or six pay periods.
Now, Brenda, you said something, maybe have to modify the handbook?
If they wanna add something to the handbook, we'd seen an addendum to it.
Yeah.
Okay. So?
So this is what you wanna do?
Uh, we get rid of the red lines.
So we need to ordinance amending the handbook as to law enforcement, if that's what you're wanting to do.
That's what we wanna do.
Okay, I can drive that.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, it is.
Sir, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Get that off the table then.
I'll have that for your next meeting.
So, uh?
Hopefully that'll be January 2nd, or whatever it is, 3rd.
I'll wait, thanks to our business.
Nice to have two weeks off, wouldn't it? Everybody's like, don't change this.
Well, you know, we might need one more.
No.
No?
No. We're gonna wrap it up tonight.
Wrapping her up tonight, okay.
Okay, thanks, Bill.
You're welcome, thank you.
Doug?
All right, well, Tulip Lane sidewalks are done. So we'd be moving on to either Stark or Voorhees.
Did Tulip have sidewalks?
Yeah, on both sides, all the way around.
I did not know that.
Tulip Lane, yeah.
Wow. Another spot to walk.
I don't get over there very well.
Yep, so all the ones that, we had to repair or whatever.
My dog has little legs now.
So, they're, we're done over there, we'll be moving on. To the park board here, the park fence is down around the pickleball court.
Did you happen to look at the gate down there on the south side of the pool? One of them's off its inch.
Yeah, somebody backed into it, we need to loosen it, pull it back in there. So, but that fence is down, looks much better without the fence. And out along the road, there's already some rock. I've been thinking about going ahead and hauling some 53s in there, just to dress it up a little bit, a little bit of parking and everything in there. And then the question we talked about earlier, there is two courts down there. I got some measurements on my phone, if you'd like to. I don't know the official size of the courts.
Has anybody played on them?
There is no net or nothing, no stripes or nothing like that, just. We were just talking about it this afternoon, so I did go down and look for you. Three Phase Behind Barker Gang is up, just has to be hooked up to the body shop. They've asked for Three Phase, they bought new equipment, upgrading all that stuff. That will be hooked up, done on after hours, like a Saturday or Sunday morning, due to shutting power down, and having a couple businesses there be without power for a couple hours. So the guys will be coming in as soon as they can, and work with those guys. So they will be doing a few hours over. And then out Strawberry Road, the concrete inside the building's all done. Looks really nice, they did a fantastic job inside there with the drains and all that. I went out today.
You did that?
Graves. I went out today to talk to them, they went there today to find out some dates on when they plan on putting that in, so we got the heat and everything and all that stuff, so. Other than that, that's, that's about all I got. We'll be moving forward on more concrete, and we're gonna start doing some brush clearing and road clearing and stuff on that, will be our next big thing, other than with power. And then, I didn't know, do we, did you wanna do the budget thing for this?
Well, yeah, let's talk about the equipment, you've got it up there. We, uh, I think we all talked about it last week. Anybody thought anywhere about it, or?
Well, I think we need another dump truck for sure.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we're looking at two mowers, another gator. Modification of a, uh, old, we'll call it the baby bucket truck to a chipper truck.
Doing a modification, be putting the chipper bed on it, and be able to put that back in.
Replacing two trucks, a 1500 and a 3500. Some lights, bed, that's about it, I think. Hundred thousand under budget, what, budget for next year, that's.
What about the street sweeper, what do we do with that?
Well, a street sweeper, we're, we're dreaming, dreaming some. We would like to go after ready 2.0. See if we can, can, well, we can't apply, I don't know if we did it, but. So yeah, yeah, I guess this would be, there's no questions on it, we can do the whole budget at one time, I suppose. Prove it, but, uh, yeah, thank Doug for getting all this put together for us. Oh, yeah, the logo, yeah, yeah.
Is that the one?
Well, listen, Bill sent me this, thanks, Bill. Yeah, it's, it's kind of, uh, yeah, that's our old logo from somewhere.
Well, again, I don't, I mean, I would just assume, this is, looks to me more like county, cause it's farms.
Well, I don't know what's appropriate for Rockville.
Actually, that's the actual seal.
Is that the seal like the fire department has, what they got on this?
The one I sent him was colored, that's why it's not looking.
Maybe that's like from the 1800s when we were founded, and that's how the town looked.
Well, it has a covered bridge, has a tractor, has courthouse. It's kind of busy.
I don't like the tractor.
We can modify that a little bit, I can work with Michelle, I believe that's who done it.
Well, I don't, yeah, we can modify it, we could come up with something that's, do we want a new logo or not? I guess the first question, what started us, we getting some vehicles?
He doesn't like, yeah.
We're, we're getting new vehicles, the other ones we got are falling off, and.
Lazy R.
It's a lazy R.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's what it's titled, I just think we could do better. We don't have to do them all at once, we could work on it every day, but I think we can come up with a better logo.
Well, I, I'm all in favor of maybe looking at some, some design options.
Yeah, why don't we, like?
I guess my point is, this is fine, but it's kind of busy, I should have printed that in color. It is pretty when it's in color, but, but if we could just have something a little more simple that's.
Couldn't we do like a contest?
Oh, God. A contest, well, you could.
We wouldn't have to use the, like, we wouldn't have to use them, but have some of the.
Well, don't say that when you could have started. Yeah, but, well, I.
Could we replace like the bridge, if you don't want the bridge and the tractor on there, but like a utility truck?
I don't think it's a bridge.
I think it's a barn.
A barn, is that a barn? Well, there is a barn and a bridge.
It's a covered, yeah.
But I don't, I don't know what, what, something simple is my, my suggestion, just simple.
You want it to go new and innovative?
Yeah.
You know, simple, simple.
Something cutting edge.
It needs to be more rural, not, you know, cityfied. We're a rural county, let's just keep finding different ideas.
Who came up with this?
It's been around a long time.
Yeah, that, uh.
Yeah, there it is, Bill, thanks, Bill, here, Bill's got the colored one. I love the green and the blue.
I mean, if this is our town seal that we're using on everything, why don't we just use it?
That is the town seal that we're using?
Yeah.
Why not put the, why not put the pavilion on there? It's in town.
Okay, okay, so, so. If we put that in a vehicle, I mean, it wouldn't be unappealing, I mean, it's, it's.
The fire department's already got it, right?
Yeah, it's on there.
There's just not colored, though, I believe there's just black and white, but it's the same color.
Is it, well, I'll have to go look at there, I made the look at today when I was over there talking to him about some other stuff, and I didn't. So I'll, I'll get a picture of it on the car, and see what it looks like, send it to you guys, and then, like I said, if there's anything on there, we could go, you know, if they didn't want.
Well, Dave has a good point, it is our seal.
It's our 200th anniversary too, why would we not update?
Well, that's an interesting point. Could we update that?
To something that reflects the town more.
Well, the town does have a courthouse, I mean, it's, we're the county.
I don't mind the courthouse.
We're the county seat, there's covered bridges out the wazoo.
Not in town.
Well, no, but it's part of our heritage.
That looks to me like a county seal.
You know, heck, we used to farm where Memory Gardens at.
I know.
It used to be farm ground, old Gerald Gooch used to farm it.
People used to live to 30, too.
Well, yeah, okay, uh, so I don't know, I mean, it's not, I'm not terribly offended by it. I love the colored one, I should have printed that.
I'm not offended, I'm just not excited by it.
You don't think it shows progression?
I don't.
I like it in color. If you put a beggar across the mail, it says 200 years, or.
Huh?
That's fine, I'll just be up under this usual, it's fine, I'm used to it.
What are we doing in 2025, though?
Well, you know, basically.
You're a litty.
Yeah.
Might be able to get a temporary for.
We could all ask her if she could do something above it.
Why not just have a banner that's permanent, says, you know, what would be 19, well, actually, what is it, 19?
1824.
1824 and 19.
2024.
2024. I mean, 200 years, uh, put it right on there, of course, then you have Mike to modify your, you wanna modify your little bit? Your seal? No, okay. Well, appreciate you folks, you know, asking, sending that, I mean, I'm okay with it.
I'll get some ideas, I'll, I'll talk to Michelle, see what she does about the year.
The collars are nice. And yeah, it incorporates some stuff outside, but still, it's all, we're all, we're all in this together.
We had a pavilion that held Chautauquas that had pretty famous people, and it's in town.
That's, that's in town, but that building on there, most people don't know what the heck it is. I'm honestly, that's being brutally honest.
Educate them. Moving on.
Moving on, what are you gonna, where are we at, where are we at?
One last thing. The electric department is needing some supplies, part of it, $1,700 of this will go eventually built to McDonald's. And some is just day-to-day stuff, and then there, 4,000 of it actually is going to put cutouts in, I think, three different locations on the south side of town. So when there's power outages, instead of having to walk the whole south end of town, this should split it up, the power outages, to where we could.
Will they cut out or breakers? Is it like a breaker?
They're cut out, it's basically like a fuse or something like that, too. So instead of being out for an hour and a half, looking all over the south side of the town, we can, we can put sections back in at a time as we find it, or it may just blow out one small section.
Well, who determined where to put them?
We'll put them at the Three Phase areas where the transport's over and everything.
Okay.
It should have been done in the upgrade, last time the upgrade of the south side, it wasn't, so Brett, Dan, and I would like to do it. So 4,000 of this is that, but the time we buy everything and everything, this will be a total of, uh, I think.
12,000.
12,030.
That's close. Okay. That's unusual.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
So that's just on the south side, the north side?
Yeah, the north side's pretty good.
Well, yeah, we put a second Three Phase up, 41, we've got those, those things on Virginia Hall, or whatever they're called.
Yeah, so it, it'll just, you know, last time, last couple times we've had out, we've had to walk all the way down Erie, Virginia, come back up to here, go through the park and everything, because you just, it's that spread out. This will break that up, so. And get power back on lock for here for people.
That'd be great. Before we move on from you, Nick showed me a thing from, uh, announcement from Community Crossings. They're going to, uh, for the year of 24, raise our minimum from a million to 1.5 million. Not just ours, I mean, the, you know, but, uh, so we might be able to. We might be able to get another road or two in there if we can, if we have matching funds, so.
Yeah, that's interesting, still 25%, I assume.
Yeah, they didn't change anything else, but it's a pilot program, um, for 2024. No guarantee that they leave it at that going after that date, but if you can apply for up to one and a half, why not?
Yeah.
I think, no, it's, I mean, we're already, of course, we got Anderson in the last, this year's second round. We talked about doing Stark in the first round.
Oh, why, you mentioned that, perfect segue, uh, yeah, apparently we don't actually have to have, and we're not, all we're doing milling, right? I think, Brad, I don't know, did you look into it and found out we don't actually have to have an engineer and pay that cost? That you can actually get it, uh, estimated by a contractor, and, and.
By a licensed DMT contractor.
Okay, thank you, clarify that. So, we have it, we probably should have a, does the board want to go after Stark in round one of 2024?
On a, just a Mill and Blacktop project, we can do that. So if we have some other roads out there, short roads that are.
Oh, we have no other roads that need fixed.
No, right.
We talked today, so why don't you try to get me a list together if we want to add anything else to Stark other than that? And then if you all wanna make a motion for me to apply for that when it opens, then Doug and I'll put together a list.
Well, I'll move on the motion thing. Yeah, and figure out on Stark, where does that start, where does Stark start? Does it start at the, where does it start in, ends over there?
At the corner, where you turn on to.
I don't know if it starts somewhere around there, and then how far goes all the way past you, Bill?
Yeah, I think it's Marshall Rockville Road.
Right there at that corner.
Dewey White's, oh.
Yep.
I think it is the Stark Street.
Did we do any of that? We didn't do that section in Burnett Manor ever in recent memory. I think we did Marshall Road down.
We did Marshall, yep.
Ten years ago.
So the county's redoing Marshall Road in twenty twenty-five, the entirety from forty-seven to our town limits.
Holy moly.
Really?
Yeah, they just announced that. So that's something, and I, I mentioned to them that Martin Street splits off and that they have part of that Y till town limits.
That Martin is, right.
So they're gonna redo that.
You know very well, yeah.
So that's all gonna be brand new up until your town limits on both roads.
Nice. Uh, so anyway, yeah, I figure out, I, I, I'm assuming we want to do the whole Stark. I don't know.
But they actually follow you guys, so whatever you do, then the very next year, they're doing their thing. If you guys are doing twenty twenty-four, they won't do theirs till twenty twenty-five.
Uh, but yeah, any other small sections you might want to throw in? Well, streets in general, I did. Well, you, you know what to do. Let us know.
If you would, uh, coming over the hill there, Martin, if you would look up the right-of-way on that. Just to see what our right-of-way is. Uh, might be worth entertaining the notion of putting tiles down both sides of that and maybe widen. Widening and straightening it out by just widening it.
Yes, that's, yeah, it's pretty tight.
Especially if there's campers.
More and more bigger campers coming through there.
Yeah, I, I don't think that'd be a huge job, really. I think that'd be great, then we could, cause man, we'd go through there and find tracks where people's been off and that.
No way. So, yeah, if you would, just come and check the right-of-ways on that and see. Really don't want to have to buy any, but.
Well.
Maybe they'd be so excited to get their road down there, just saying, you know.
I bet you got a bigger wideway than, right-of-way than your road anyway, wouldn't you, my guess?
I would think so.
Eh, not on those feeder roads.
Twenty feet?
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, I think that town owns a small piece of property down there.
Or did we, we do still. We never said that, did we? Yeah, so we do.
That A-frame?
No, just on this, back on this side of it.
Cause we got it at tax sale.
So, yeah.
Huh, north side?
Be more on the west side, wouldn't it? Kind of west or? On Martin Street, right at the bottom.
Oh, yeah, right there on the right, at the bottom, on the south side. Yeah, it used to be a house there. Yeah, didn't it?
Yeah, up on the hill, there was a house. The house, the one across the street you're talking about, the houses there, somebody from Griffith owns that. They're down there in a camper.
There used to be a house on.
Yeah, on top of the hill.
There was an A-frame up there or something, wasn't there?
My sister lived there for a while. One time I went down the hill in the snow with Mary. I was like, oh crap, I don't, I can't stop when I get to the road. We bailed off.
Yeah, I'll check that, see what I can come up with. But that's all I have, so.
Appreciate it, Doug. Thank you. Uh, Randy, you wanna go back over our projects?
I don't really have much, I don't think, to update. Um, still, we can still take. Donations for patroness to be growing up, I'll do it until the end of February. Still waiting on to hear back from the engineer on N dot front of dot or I M um, for the Okra. Spreading water. That's also not projects really, for right now. I have a couple of other things, but.
On projects, uh, the Anderson Street Community Crossing. Where did I see that? You were gonna look at right-of-ways out there. I, oh, you sent an email. Roger, yeah, this morning, come, got back with us on that. It just, okay, anyway, what was it? Apparently, there's no, we, we aren't sure at this point. He's not sure.
I reached out to him because I was concerned if there were right-of-ways to be purchased, if he was handling it. He said he wasn't. He was under the understanding that there wasn't any right-of-ways needed, but there may be an easement. So I asked him to call Doug, make sure, get Doug on board, where those right-of-ways are, where that sidewalk's gonna go. And if we need an easement for drainage, then we need to get on that quicker than.
Well, that drainage would probably be the one that goes from north to south down to Rockville Road by Gambiany. I guess that's the one they'd be talking about.
I, we didn't get into those details, but.
So did you hear from Roger?
Yeah, he called me, want to know what I knew and I, I really, the easement wise, I don't know a whole lot about. I talked to Soros about it. There's not a lot of stuff in writing for easements.
Imagine that.
So, we're actually hoping to present something in the coming months, Josh and I, on the easements. So we can actually get it done right, writing.
You want to create one or you're looking to see if we already have?
Well, we're gonna go through and see what we do have, like, like, say, for the six foot, yes, like, say that, we, we always tell everybody we have six foot from the center of the pole. Each way.
Yeah.
It's not actually in writing, so we need to get that all in writing. So when we do approach somebody or do projects like this, we have that document.
So, i- if we're what, I mean, it ought to be recorded if we have existing easement. Yeah, it'd be on the property record already.
It's not binding if it's not recorded.
Right, and so then we need to record one, but if we're needing to purchase a one that we already have or get one in writing, I can do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I just need to know what properties it's, it's going across and they're gonna have to consent to.
Yeah, we're, we're, what we're gonna try to do is like, like on Howard Avenue, for instance. I think he said it says like thirty feet from the center of the road and or so many feet off the sidewalk. We're gonna measure and see which. One actually works better for us and that's the one we'll actually go with.
Okay, well, just let me know when you get to.
We're, yeah, we're gonna start after the first year, then we'll get stuff, we'll present it to you, so.
Cause we're, if we're in our right-of-way, we don't need an easement, but if we're going across somebody else's property, we're gonna have to either purchase bigger right-of-way. Or draft an easement to go across.
So this will like, when we have meetings like this or have, we already have the information there.
Okay.
You know, we're not always looking it up every time, trying to figure out what we can do and don't have. We're gonna get it all taken care of and try to.
So, so Roger's not gonna spend any time on this, which is, we're just on us, right?
He called to ask me if I could find anything out today. Easements wise, we have very little easement written down that we could actually sit here and tell him, this is what we got. Just give me a list.
My point is, this project is being bid out to twenty-six. We award bids in January. That's what started this whole conversation a few weeks ago. Um, so yeah, up there from first, first financial down to Pine Drive. You know, we have that on the north side, we have that issue with, are we in our right-of-way? Uh, and then we have that issue from, I'm, I'm pretty sure it's that drain they're gonna take from, from Anderson down to Rockville Road there by Gambiany. And I'm not sure who it affects. Is it your, uh, who would be Chad's father-in-law, perhaps?
Is it running down like the Northwood or whatever, or what is that?
Well, no, it goes, it goes from uh.
He mentioned Phil Hill.
Phil Hill?
He's a, yeah, he used to work at RMC.
Where's he live?
It is his wa- ex-wife.
Oh, yes, yes. Yeah, she's, it's on the.
Bill Lauder is that other house.
Is that down on Rockville Road?
I think it's that, is that that modular there, that level wide?
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, that'd be, yeah. Yeah, it goes from Rockville, Anderson to Rockville Road. It goes along Larry Gambiany's house.
So I should be shooting through there and then across Gambiany's property.
Which, so we probably don't already have one, that's my guess.
Well, okay, let me uh, uh, jump on the other wagon.
Maybe you do.
You know, yet again, here's another project that was designed by an engineer and given to us to bid out. We bid, we're bidding it out. We don't have. Some issues resolved.
We should have a little bit back there, cause we do have power lines right now, so there should, we should have that right-of-way.
Okay.
Easement through there, so we should have part of that. Doctor Gambiany, I mean, we need right-of-ways and easements, I get that. He would be probably more than willing to sign anything he has to get that pitch filled in, so.
Yeah, he's mowed it for fifty years.
That'll be it.
So if we find we don't have one, I guess is what I'm telling you. I can draft one if we need it.
All right.
My guess is we do have one if you already have utilities going through there.
Yeah, we should have one at least behind the houses, not going across to the properties is what's gonna get us, I think.
So where do you find your right-of-way information? Like for Anderson Street, where do you go?
Club office? Probably core office up there and see what we can.
I'd go to planning if I were you.
Planning?
Yeah, okay. I mean, plat, not.
Where's those catch basins that are west of the hump there? I mean, basically between uh, or, you know, where the hump were, be your dad's property and like Greg Gray's property. Everything west of that. That water, is it going down Hook Drive and then down Rockville Road?
A lot of that goes over, there is a drain in the front yard that doesn't work real well. Right there by the new modular that was put in recently, between, right there between, that'd be between the modular and Phil Hill's.
Right, so all that water is going.
Shoots across over to, yes.
Is that where Overpecks?
Overpecks is in Larry's.
I'm guessing up there at Dollar General, that drain that's there, that probably goes along Hook Drive or down to.
Yeah, I would think so. I think it does. I think it goes over to, there's, there's a catch basin at the Dollar Store at the east side of the entrance. And there's one at the west side, and then again, the west side shoots over, like you said, down. Just the way it is, it's a grade.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a tad.
So that does go.
Yeah, it'll go down over and, yes, and end up behind uh, uh, the house there on Westwood.
Well, obviously, if we're gutter that, then, I mean, we're gonna be flowing water east and west.
Yeah, it's Wednesday, yeah. Oh, okay, something else, uh, Randy's pointing out, pre-bid meetings is Wednesday. You know, if you could have any information to add to that meeting, if anybody shows up, it'd be good, cause they should be asking, if they're not asking, they should be asking those questions. On a side note, Case Engineering for Construction called me today, a local guy out of Terre Haute, and I gave two names to him, yours and yours. Did they happen to talk to one of you?
Yeah, he come to visit.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I got his card. Um, he, he'd be more interested to come and talk to us, bring his boss in. Uh, I've got his email that we will contact him. He wants to know about uh, Stark Street. He said that the information that you were given, he don't know who gave it to you, but that is.
Yeah, when I called Edinburgh, they said they don't have any paving equipment this side of the state. It's all south and up around Muncie.
But he said, a lot of it is up there, but he said for a job like Stark Street, they'd be more unhappy.
Well, I mentioned Anderson. He said, do we have anything coming? I said, Anderson, pre-bid meeting next week. Uh, I mentioned Stark. But yeah, so good. They did make contact. I don't, if they wanna come and talk to us, I guess it's fine. I mean, we just, we just wanna competitive bid on projects.
Yeah, we told him, you know, however Randy does it, or I can forward it on to him when she puts, when I eat, I get the email. And then he, but he said, no, they would definitely bring equipment in on the, the job.
Well, that's nice to hear. It's good to have competition.
Any roads, like you said, like, say, like Jefferson Street where we cut that water out, it's a new block top.
Yeah, I was telling about our cuts. We accumulate them every few years and we try to find someone to fix them and, and last time, it really is added on to a project we had, the people are at camp. It'd be nice to bid those out.
He's, he said on something like that, being that we'd only have like maybe sometimes two or three at a time. He could come look at them and then when he comes in and does something for like Miller, he would just do ours while he's here.
Probably get a better price.
Yeah, and it's all depending on how we want it fixed. If it's high-traffic area, they'll do whatever you want. They'll put in a foot of concrete, leaving an inch and a half. And then they'll go over it with uh, blacktop or.
Well, it's good they made contact. I was shocked that they uh, had a callback, cause the first call was pretty much dead end impression. Good.
So, so we'll, I told him, I sent her a copy of it and then, we'll definitely keep them in mind. They do sidewalks, they do about everything.
Nice. Okay. I don't remember his name. I didn't have a pen. Uh, where are we at, Ken?
To public comment, our old business.
Well, hold on, hold on.
Park has old business.
Probably. I think we just covered a bunch of it. Um, yeah, well. We, we uh, need to approve the budget, folks. Uh, since last week, anybody have any comments or additional questions or? Any questions at all?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Well, there you go.
Do you want it in a second?
Sure.
Okay.
All in favor?
Uh, yeah, I don't, I can't. We got that, we got the process.
I just wanted to touch briefly on the demo to the street property now that it's demoed and complete, but several interested people in that property. Um, one appraisal that we have done in the past is still good because it was appraised with the removal of the house. Just waiting on an updated appraisal on the other one and then we'll get a cost that we can advertise and take bids on that. So we can maybe move forward. Um, we do believe, according to what Josh and I have found on record. It appears that it's in an industrial zone.
Really?
So there's a couple of potential interests that would not need re-donings if that's.
What property is that?
Back here on Jefferson Street.
Five oh one South Jefferson.
Remember the address?
Is it next to scaffold King?
It's the other side, house side.
I think it's five oh one, is that, or four oh?
Right next to.
Right next to the. Four two, four, uh, there about.
When's, when's our organizational meeting? Oh, okay.
I thought we said the third.
We said the third, wouldn't it?
Second or third? Okay.
Wednesday, January third, at five o'clock, unless you guys wanna do a different time. We'll go ahead and have our, we'll actually have our first meeting for claims, approvals, uh, any other businesses on the agenda. And then we'll do our organizational, so we'll do all of the appointments at that meeting as well.
And we'll set up.
And I'll have the schedule of events. If you, unless you're considering doing a different meeting day and time, let me know. But I'll leave the schedule as is for the first and third Mondays at five.
Third, okay, so does that mean we'd be meeting on the eighth or not?
No, we will meet the fifteenth.
Fifteen, okay.
The third and the fifteenth for January.
Okay.
Fifteenth's not a holiday, is it?
Uh, well.
Is that MLK?
Yeah.
I thought we didn't get that off.
Is it not this year?
I didn't think we ever got that one. Really? You guys haven't sent that out yet, have you? Schedule.
Yeah, it's, it's been announced in our office.
Really?
So, if we're talking about it now, do you wanna still do it the fifteenth or you wanna do it the sixteenth?
Well, I mean.
Well, I'm sure I'll be celebrating MLK Day.
Well, I know, but you can take a break. I'd better keep it to fifteen.
And I don't really care.
Yeah, I, I, I just, uh, what?
Uh-oh, our liberal back here's offended.
Yeah, I work Tuesday nights. I hate to mess up my work schedule and have to hire someone to come in, so, yeah, we can do it Monday at the beginning.
Okay, so the third and the fifteenth.
Is it a recognized holiday for the town?
It is in the house.
So you're all.
It's just easier to keep one's.
Okay, cause we have to get up Tuesday morning anyway.
Okay, uh.
You got your old business you wanna talk about?
I do not. I, 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 I do not. That's my Christmas gift to all of you. No more, no more.
Anybody else, we got your old business?
No, but I thought of a couple of things for the town seal.
Oh, dear.
You know?
Oh, dear, watch.
We could have put Andrew Ray's log cabin instead of the barn and or the bridge, and we could put the large rock.
Oh, the rock, yeah. What's interesting?
Just saying, if you, if you brainstorm a little, you might come up with other things.
Okay.
Oh, geez, you draw that up for us, but you have worked that?
I cannot. Well, I could, I could probably draw a rock, maybe.
Yeah, oh boy.
Is there any public comment?
Somebody support me.
Nothing.
Wow, okay, well.
I motioned and she seconded.
Okay, all in favor?